I just want everybody to know that I was not crazy.
That's right. When you called me, I'm like, what are you talking about?
Relative to this. I'm crazy about other things.
I'm glad you added that. You know, we're starting off the meeting being very punchy. If it gets
Forty was north.
If it gets too out of hand, I'm going to call and gerbit. Okay.
Would you like to move?
Let's come to order, people. This is the infield planning board. It is November twentieth. And we are starting the meeting at six forty-one. We are in the conference room at the DPW facility and also we are on the Microsoft Teams video platform. Apologize for starting late. There was a scheduling conflict for which Rob Taylor takes full responsibility. So we have attendance. Members present from my left.
Linda Jones.
Eric Russell.
Dan Kylie.
I'm David Crack.
Bill Vermeer.
Brad Rich.
Tim Ginnings.
I'll pass these
Alternates. Kurt, are you present?
Yeah, I'm present.
Got to say your name.
Just Kurt.
I just said Kurt. I don't know your last name. Staff members.
Rob Taylor, staff.
Whitney Finker also alternate.
And our guest tonight. Dan. Okay, we have no hearings, no conceptual. Eric, do you have a select board report?
We had a very eventful select board meeting. From some tax issues around the violence that we signed for different nonprofits in the area. So we're going through the process through the state. The state's questioning whether they qualify for their full exemption. Went through, put in a item on the on the town warrant in the spring for a potential watershed management plan grant for Crystal Lake specifically. We passed the septic rule after having it go through legal. And then the biggest one that folks may have questions on, we got sort of an update on the fraud situation that the town had. I can summarize if people don't know or answer questions. But the press releases have largely said what is sort of known facts at the moment. Do you want me to run through it or people? I don't want to waste time if people sort of know.
People need them to run through it.
Let people know and make sure we get the information out.
It's pretty well pronounced by the serve and other outlooks.
I would encourage everyone to go straight to Ed if you want up to date factual information. Certainly, some of the stuff circulating through just word of mouth is not completely accurate. The press releases, we've tried to be straightforward in them. We're going to keep doing that. It's a bad situation, but we're going to work through it.
Okay. Any progress on hiring a new accountable clerk?
They have applications.
Good.
They were interviewing today. There was at least a couple of interviews today.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Any questions for our select board member? Okay, moving along. Rob Taylor, land use administrator.
A quick update. You guys should have seen a email from today with building permits in the new format that Tim helped me with. Let's see. Big stuff from last week was I got to attend the court hearing for the ZBA appeal. Linda was there. She sat. She was up in the front row when I was in the back. We, it was about an hour long hearing. Attorneys for the plaintiffs started out and or an attorney for the plaintiff. And then at our side on the defense, it was our attorney, Michael Courtney, alongside the attorney for the developer kind of Cronin, which I think the court refers to as an intervener. He had to file for a status in the case as an intervener. Obviously, they're the ones that stand to lose or gain the most on the whole thing. So the court gives them a status in the in the case as a intervener. From my perspective, I thought it was it was fascinating. It was interesting and both sides had pretty good arguments and but the judge now has, I think, sixty days to issue his ruling. We shall see what happens there. They went to go. We had just a few people in the audience. It wasn't very many people there. As you guys know, this is the Hillsborough North Court, which is now the land use docket for the state. It's a very, very busy court. According to the attorneys that I talked to after the thing, said that that judge probably has between fifteen and twenty-five cases on his docket at any given moment. So they thought that he would take all of the sixty days to get the decision out to us. Basically, all the evidence presented, the certified record is a three ring binder that I helped create, which is all the minutes and the agendas and any records, any emails, any written documents that relate to the case. And that is something that we share with the attorneys. Then it's disclosure. It gets shared with the plaintiffs and the judge had a copy on his desk and I actually got a copy of it too from the attorney. That's basically the you know, they've collated it in page numbers. And so it got referred to a lot during the the hearing as to specific pieces of evidence. So that was Thursday. No, that was Wednesday of last week. CBA did meet on Tuesday of last week and they did ultimately grant the special exception for wetlands crossings for the developed clarity farms. Larry B. Farms has decided, even though there's uncertainty with the court case, they've continued to pursue approvals necessary. I think that's the last zoning approval necessary. It's a special exception. Anytime you cross a wetland, you have to have special exception approval from the town. There's a drainage swale coming out of a pond. It's actually on Linda's land, comes down towards four. And the access road that the developers proposed it would go up and actually have to cross that drainage in a couple of spots. And so that one, if you guys will recall, you had an opportunity to weigh in, which which you chose not to take, but conservation did have two meetings and they actually did a field trip. Some of the members went to Haverhill, Mass and blast out in Hampshire to look at developments that the same developer had done. They wrote a letter I thought was very thoughtful and it was presented at the ZBA meeting last week. Health officer also wrote a memo. He was concerned about drainage on Maple Street or impacts to Maple Street residents from the uphill property. So that was kind of fascinating. They had the applicants had a wetland scientists that they've been working with, kind of a very complicated process there to delineate all the wetlands and impacts and so forth. And so that was zoning.
Good day.
Yeah.
Once you get a CBA approval to cross a wetland, you still have to go to state in permit.
Absolutely. And they actually have a lot of permits that the state will be issuing. Alteration, that's the big.
Yep, yep.
Well, that and DOT.
So they'll need, anything over a hundred thousand square feet is the AOT, the alteration of terrain. They'll also, I think there there's wetlands permitting because of the crossing of the wetlands that requires permits from the state. It's a pretty pretty aggressive review on their end. As well as other other things. There's, you know, there's a lot, as you guys know, there's permitting is very long and complicated and and technical. So that'll be happening. You guys will have a hearing in December. We do have one application pending for the, if you guys recall, we did have a conceptual. It came in to talk to you. I think it was want to say Stevens or Wells, one of those, right at the end of the street, Stephen Street. They are doing a boundary line adjustment. I think they talked to you guys.
No, no, it's a piece of property.
And the neighbor wanted the land
Right.
from the person that's selling. It's a lakefront property that's being sold. Very, very nice piece of property. And I think the guy just wanted some insulation for his property, which is a little further up the hill. So you guys will be seeing that. We've been recording my hours and affidavits for the cases from a couple of weeks back. Or even further back, I guess it's three weeks, four weeks back. It's very busy at the offices here. We have budget tomorrow where my our budget planning, zoning, economic development will be before the budget committee. DPW, I think it's also cemetery tomorrow night. So it'll be a busy night for the budget committee. See what else. That's about it. Well, I know we got a lot of stuff on our agenda tonight. Good question.
Yeah, on the court case. Believe, I'm not positive, but I believe especially once it goes to court, the briefs the lawyers file become public records.
Yeah, I do have a few of those.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to read what they say.
Yeah, I do have a few of the memos. I don't think I got them all, but I mean, I could certainly share.
It's like this package that they put together. They're they're basically it's there. Each lawyer has their arguments and they put the paperclip of their argument.
Maybe it's in the certified record that I have.
No, the certified record is what goes to them, but then they write
Yep.
their reports to present to the courts.
Yep.
And then they do their oral argument. It's a complimentary
Yes.
to the oral oral argument.
I've got the memos from our attorney.
Should be, should be also there's the other side.
Yep.
Because I believe it all.
I would think you could get that from the court.
You have to get it from the court. Yep.
Okay.
I have not seen any of the memos from there, but maybe our attorney could get them. I don't know.
Your attorney could.
Yep. Oh, so we'll talk about it in just a little while, but we do have RFQ responses that we can get into in a little bit. And I'll just update you. Monday night, we did meet master planning task force, which we'll probably talk about a little bit later. Do you want to get into that?
We'll talk about it later.
Okay.
When it comes up.
Great.
Is that it? Okay. Not on the agenda, but I have a brief legislator report if the board is willing to listen. I have been, well, actually, I'm two days into a two and a half day new legislators orientation program. As most of you will remember, I came in in the middle of a biennium due to a special election. And I've been finding what I've been learning extremely helpful. The part that I was missing is the process. How do you get things done? How do you get those through, find cosponsors, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm feeling very good about that. Also found out that this year, again, there will be a special committee on housing appointed. And that actually may have status as a standing committee. I'm not quite sure what the speaker is attending intending. And also there is a housing caucus, which is a bipartisan group of people that are concerned with various aspects of housing in the state of New Hampshire and depending on what the time commitments are to that, I will most likely be joining that group as well. So that's what I have for legislative report. Next is minutes of our November sixth meeting. Are there any comments or questions or corrections? We didn't get it all right as usual.
I did not have any changes.
I didn't either.
I didn't either.
You don't.
I make a motion. We accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions.
No abstain.
Okay. Minutes are accept accepted as presented or approved as presented. Zoning working group reports. Let's start with.
Can I ask a question?
Can can we review our little plan that we all talked about where one or two of us from the planning board goes off and creates this thing? And then we add one or two other members. Can we go through that? Because there was a lot of confusion last time from a couple of folks in the audience that I met with off site.
Okay.
Just just to get everybody on the same page.
Just basically, I I think you described it quite well. What we decided to do. And this kind of all fits in with the off grant, which hopefully we're going to get it. If we don't get it, then we will have to fall back and regroup and come up with another plan. But what we decided as a group was that we would have volunteers tackle a specific section or topic of the zoning regs, such as the village district, Route four slash commercial business. AD, I'm sorry, ADU is the current zoning thing. Rural areas, lakeshore, et cetera. That person, or if there are two people working on it, would come up with what would essentially be a framework, talking points, bullets, whatever you want to call it. They would then invite one or two stakeholders from their particular community. That group would then go over, revise and you know, try to come up with with a framework that is acceptable to that small group. Then we would hold a series of public discussions wherein we would present the framework to lake residents.
Would it come to the planning board first?
For approval?
For review.
For review.
My my real question I'm asking
Okay.
is at what point does this become public?
That's a good question. I think we had decided it would become public when we invited the group to come in and give comments. What we don't want to do is
So before we do that, shouldn't the planning board look at it?
Yes.
Okay.
I would think so.
And if if the planning board is going to look at it in a meeting and discuss it.
Then it's public.
It's public that at that
Yeah.
which I think makes sense.
Yeah.
Expanding the group of one or two people to three or four people. Who makes those decisions on who those people are?
The people who are the original group members. In other words, if you were the lake
Yep.
person.
Unfortunately, I got volunteered by the man in the corner.
That you you guys fight that out.
Yeah, yeah.
Voluntold.
I don't, I don't, I don't want to get, I don't want to get involved in that fight.
Yeah.
Because you're all volunteers. So, you know, you would select one or two people.
Yeah.
And it might be the chairs of the lake association.
Yeah.
It might be three or four people that you know that live on the lake.
Yeah.
It's up to you.
Okay.
You know, I'm 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 not saying.
We don't need to go through a formal process.
No, no, we're we're being very informal.
Yeah.
At this point.
Yeah.
Because the minute
It's just ideas at this point.
The minute we become formal.
Yeah.
Then it becomes public.
Yeah.
And we, what we don't want to do is present something or have something out there.
That is half baked.
That is half baked and doesn't have at least a little bit of support
Right.
from the planning board. Once we get to that informational discussion meeting. Once we get to that, then it will become public and what we what we don't want to do is have it appear that this is a planning board down
Right.
type of
Right.
document or or thing.
Yeah.
What we want to do is be very clear in saying that a few people got together. One of them or two of them were planning board members to provide guidance. And they came up with a suggested framework. They didn't write regulations. They didn't draft a chapter of the zoning regs. They have ideas. And now we are throwing these ideas out to a specific group who was interested in hearing those ideas. And they have the option of accepting, throwing it out or something in the middle.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question, Brad?
Thank you.
And then it comes to a planning board meeting.
Well, it would act actually, it would come to the planning board meeting before the larger group meeting.
Before the
Before the six to eight people.
So the so the order is the one or two people, then the three or four people, then the planning board.
Right.
And and an official planning
And then it goes out to the public.
Then, and I'm sure it'll get changed by the planning board. And then from there, we, in my case, we invite the lake associations and other stakeholders to say, this is what ideas, what do you think? Did we
Exactly.
Did we hear correctly from you? Do you like any of this? Do you want to throw it all out?
Exactly. That's that's the way we envision it. And once we get through all that and have a general consensus from the public, at that point is when we start to involve our professional planning consultants.
Yes, it's just legal.
Who can take those ideas and refine them into you know, perhaps better public meetings and write actual zoning regs that will stand up to any possible legal challenge.
Just to add I fully agree with what you just said, David. What I've found is that I will have, I will, I will think of somebody or somehow they're made known to me of someone who may be an important stakeholder in a proposed district. And as I could have a conversation with them.
Yep.
notes. I don't know that I'll ever have like just two people that you know, there may be several folks that we're not like meeting in any group. Like I met with a couple of people from the Shaker Village Homeowners Association. They have a name. I forgot what it is now, but Chosen Vale or something. They were just two gentlemen. We we had a nice conversation. That kind of thing. And and I may not, I don't really look at them as you know, solely the group, if you will.
Put their rotating, basically, you're thinking like a rotating just got information from these.
Yes.
These folks.
It's it's what it's what works for you with the particular group that you're working with.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And what Brad does with the lake association or lake people may be very different from what you do with Lower Shaker Village people and it may be very different than whoever's got
Right.
you know, commercial and route four.
I've talked to two or three people up on George Hill. I've talked to two or three people out in Lock Haven. I've talked to two or three, you know, in the rural areas of town who I know. And I know her.
And you respect their opinion.
I respect their opinions and, you know, until it gets to us, it's considered working group.
Exactly. And it's
That's it.
And it's low key.
And it's exactly.
And
You meet them for coffee.
So what I think will happen is when a group person when one of us feels like we've got enough information to to bring to the the board that, you know, we'll make make an allowance for that to happen. We're at a board meeting. We're not necessarily necessarily going to announce that we're going to talk about you know, Shaker Village or anything in particular, but it's just, we bring it to the board, we toss it around. As David said, it goes to the professionals. At some point, we've got to, we'll put together a document we feel like is is ready to go to at least an initial forum.
Yeah.
And that all sounds fairly loose, but I don't know how any other way to do it. It's just, it's just going to happen when it's ready.
It's it's got to be loose and it's going to be very organic.
Yeah. I've got five pages of notes at this point and it's you put it together from that or you keep getting input.
Or you keep going.
People have said, why don't you try, why don't you check with this person, you know? It's like there's different parts of Lock Haven. There's a difference between by Crystal Lake and out past the Potato Road.
Sure.
They're both rural, but they're also very different.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And when is the for this deadline for this?
Again, depending on whether we get the grant or not. I would it's it's sometime in the spring. I I don't have my copy of the
Isn't anything that has to happen to have hearings before?
No.
No.
No, no, no.
Not this year.
This is, this is stuff that we're preparing for hopefully twenty twenty six.
I was thinking
We don't
let up to town meeting.
No, my feeling is you don't want to have meetings with the big public meetings until spring because you don't want to have them in the winter. Because it could blow up in a snowstorm and you end up having four people. You know?
Yeah, we got town meeting to get through and
And that's it, right.
Yeah.
Right, so you right after, you know, mid April, probably would be first large public gathering.
And 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 when we do that, we want to have the consultants on board because I I have a feeling that they have a much better track record of facilitating a public meeting than does anybody gathered around this table.
And so the goal is to be looking at town meeting twenty twenty six.
Right.
That's the goal. And
That's a whole lot more comfortable than what I thought.
Yeah, and you know, there there are two things driving that goal. One is that there is a time limit on when the grant money must be expended. And Rob, do you remember when the grant money expires for phase two? Is that?
Oh, it's a long time.
It's a long time.
Well, over eighteen months.
Yeah.
So, you know, we we have time, but there is a hard deadline. And we think this process is going to go according to the schedule that we have worked out. But I don't think anybody on this board wants to rush it and come through with proposed regulations that are not likely to be accepted by the town and passed a town meeting. And, you know, I would love to have it come before the board, before town meeting in March of twenty twenty six. That's our goal. We're going to work towards it. But if we don't have a good product, we may collectively decide that we're not ready for prime time. And in that case, we will continue to work on it with or without the consultants. And we'll get it shaped up to the point where we think that, you know, we've got enough feedback from public that it's going to pass.
Now, Will, are you thinking that if three quarters is in shape and one quarter isn't, we'd go ahead and present the one, the three quarters with the rest to come the next year?
I I I I think the intent and board members can chime in on this. But the intent is that we present a complete zoning rewrite that can be voted up or down as a complete package. Am I everybody agreement?
Yeah. And and it from my perspective, it will be ready to go, ready for prime time, March of twenty six.
Well, that's everybody's
That's everybody's
everybody's goal.
And the other side of that is if it doesn't pass, we've got another six months with the consultant to make any changes we think are necessary to put it in in twenty seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get a second, to get a second bite at the apple.
But I think we 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 need to understand.
The goal needs to be the twenty six.
Yeah. And we need to understand that these working groups that we presently have Yeah, and we need to understand that these working groups that we presently have, we do not have time to just, oh, I'll get to it next week and so forth. I'm just suggesting to everyone that we really need to move, keep moving ahead on this.
Well, it, you know, it sounds to me like Brad is working diligently. Dan is working diligently. I have yet to hear from anybody else. Phil, are you working diligently?
Yes.
You wanna tell us where you are or what you're doing?
Reviewed the, our, our current, uh, ordinance and looked at, uh, how to structure a framework to, and then I'm thinking of going to see some commercial and industrial people here in town and sit down with them and take in notes.
That you're doing CI?
Yeah. It's pretty sh- pretty short.
Yeah.
It's not hard.
It's not hard.
Tim? Wanna check in on what you're doing?
Yeah, so, um, I've got three sections, working with Eric on the structure. Just sent up, you and Rob, and only today, and so it's, I doubt we'll get to it tonight, but. We, Eric and I came up with a recommended template where your working group starts filling the blanks on it. And I would suggest things like the, the purpose of the district. That's certainly something that if you feel like you wanna do the wordsmithing, put some words down on paper. Nothing wrong with that, cause we gotta, we agreed at a previous meeting that we would review the master plan, pull out the sections that work, and so, um, so do that, copy and paste those sections and don't worry too much about the formatting. And then why, you know, why is, why is this district unique? What is it about it that we feel like it should, why it should be a district, that sort of thing? Those are the kinda things you could go ahead and start putting words down. Uh, and you'll see the template when Dave and Rob get a chance to review it. And I also put together a, a long list of uses, everything from funeral homes to auto repair shops, that sort of thing, and kinda categorized them, it's just, it's a draft list. Uh, the reason I did that, I was looking at the, our existing ordinance, and there is a fairly long list. Also looking at the city and a couple of others. And I said, you know what, maybe it could be helpful if we had just a long list of stuff that potentially could, people could wanna do in a, any given district. Uh, just so you're thinking about. Funeral home, I, I don't know.
That, that's what I noticed going through all of the varying towns that have lake shore districts.
Yeah.
Is that they have a giant matrix with all of the uses down the left-hand side, and then across the top, they have, it's a grid, they have all of the zones. And it makes it, for the reader, it makes it very easy. I'm sure for the writer, it's, it's tedious, but once it's there, it makes it ea- very easy for the, for the reader to go, okay, here's where I'm.
I, I saw a couple of towns like that where you've got, you've got this great, it's one sheet.
Yeah.
And it says, this is an allowed use, this one you need a special exception in this district, this district, that district, but it's allowed use there. And it's just a great little grid.
Yeah, yeah.
And Eric and I talked about, uh, how to set that up and we decided to just make a list for now.
Yeah.
Cause the experts will probably help us build this.
Short.
Maybe, good idea, kinda thing. Yeah, anyway, so there, there's those two. And Eric and I are working on, um, the first, um, section of the ordinance would be the things like the purpose, who administers it, just little basic housekeeping kind of things. Uh, once we've got a chance to edit that back and forth, we'll send it to you guys again. And then I think that's probably something we can chew on at a meeting. Maybe you agree on that, get that part out of the way.
When do you think you'll have that ready to circulate, Tim?
Uh, well, I sent, I sent the template and the list of uses today.
Okay.
That's ready to, as soon as you guys wanna send it. And then the, give us a week.
I think we can buy it next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, we, we could actually add that, um, to our December ninth or whatever it is.
Sixth night, yes.
I can't remember, whatever day.
Or maybe it's, it's two weeks.
It's six this month. It's, it's, it's two days earlier next month.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Which, whichever, let's call it our first December meeting. Uh, that will be something that we can look forward to having reviewed it before the meeting and being able to discuss it as, as a agenda item.
Okay, and then, um, and, and as far as the other two things I'm working on, the village itself, uh, what I've been doing there is I've been with Rob and Jim and trying to understand what the town's data, what data they have, and, and how can we support any sort of mapping products that, that the consultants could do for us? Um, quite a bit of that was, was pulled together for the master plan. And, but there were a couple of missing things, and, and this is just a quick summary of some of the stuff I did. Oh, I'm sorry, we apparently have somewhere between twenty, uh, about twenty-five hundred housing units in town. That's everything from mobile homes to apartments, condos, you name it. And of those, there are only two hundred and seventy-five manufactured homes in town, which I was surprised at that. I, I, I don't know about it, I didn't really have a frame of reference, but that was kinda interesting. And then only four hundred and thirty apartments out of those two hundred and fifty-four housing. That, that I've, I found was interesting. Population wise, just dividing, uh, what we know for the census by the tax record information, the master plan record. We're somewhere between one point seven and two people per household.
Yeah.
You guys probably knew that, but I was just kinda threw that out there too.
And I think in twenty twenty, it was four point six. Do you recall that number?
In two thousand. But it's a dramatic, it was a dramatic change over, I forget if it was twenty or thirty years, but it was not a very long period of time.
No, it's about a twenty-year period. And that's, that's why people kept saying the census is wrong, although the census isn't wrong.
Right.
The housing sizes, the sizes in houses is what's driven it. Well, how come, you know?
So what, what struck me about this little exercise that I, I did, and Julie was a big help town hall, um, is that we have the data, but it's hard to tease out the information. And just this basic stuff of how many housing units do we actually have? There's an eighty-eight unit discrepancy there, and I don't know that we'll ever have it at night, you know, a hundred percent correct, but so forth. But I'm wondering if, um, the board would consider some sort of message to the board of selectmen that, you know, this is important, that we be able to, uh, we, we be able to once a year have this data published and, and the format and what's actually included would be subject to discussion and debate, you know, but, um, because we've, we're in that situation where there's not enough housing. The, the building reports are, are, are good because it starts to show us, all right, how are we doing? Are we making any gains here? But we need a starting point, and so that's what I was aiming for here. Um, anyway, that, that's just, just a thought, we don't have to debate her tonight, but.
Tim, what would you say to having Rob include this kinda data in his annual report that goes into the town report?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's just basic stuff that.
I mean, you know.
Would also require, uh, Ed and the town office to, you know, maybe by direction of the board of selectmen, just told that this is important. You know, these boards need this information, and so, um, they could come up with a way to figure out a way to keep it current.
I mean, I, I think a discrepancy of eighty-eight units out of twenty-five hundred or twenty-four hundred is, you know, it's, it's not a really significant discrepancy. And you're always gonna, you're, you're always gonna get some kinda discrepancy because of changes that happen between the time the statistics are compiled and the time that you publish your data.
Well, Julie said that June, I think it's June of each year, would be the time when the data should, in her eyes, would, would be when she knows it's most accurate.
Okay.
You know, and I saw a certain time of year, you say, okay, this data gets published.
April first is the tax date.
Right.
Whoever is physically on the ground on April first is where you get taxed on for that year.
And it takes the assessing department away, uh, ti- sometime.
Right, so that's where that time is coming from, and it makes sense if you're gonna try to figure out the schedule.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the discrepancy could also be coming into what is, what is being counted.
What's a unit?
Well, well, what is, well, it's, I mean, with the census, they're doing, uh, federal government profiling. And depending on what agency, they use different criteria as to what is a housing units.
Right.
Cause there's vacation places, there's abandoned homes. Um, now in the tax rolls, it's a house.
Right.
Even though nobody's living there, it is a house.
Right.
Um, so, and then.
But it doesn't make it in the census unit, cause nobody was living there at that point they took the census.
Yeah. And in one of the reports I read, it's on housing, it was like four or five different ways things get classified depending on what agency is doing the report.
Yeah.
So, so.
So you're, you're never gonna get the same answer.
Yeah.
It, you know, it depends who you ask. So that, that's why I'm saying that a discrepancy of eighty-eight is, you know, well within the margin of acceptability.
Right, and this is, this is your base for whatever you decide to do.
Yeah, I think the tax records are probably.
Closer.
Much closer to what's actually on the ground. There, there may be like a fifteen-unit discrepancy really. Comparing it to the tax, to the census, like you say, you don't know what their criteria are.
Yeah, yeah.
So anyway.
And, and, you know, what, what I would further say is that what really matters is that going forward with this kind of reporting, we use the same basis year over year over year. And if we decide it's the tax records as of April first, we just have to be consistent.
So, um, if our board asks the select board to make this a priority, um, these are the reasons why. We don't have to come up with all the details, like, like what data and whatever, that, that will happen. Cause we don't, do you think that's the way to?
Well, I think that, so the first part is how's the data gonna be used as, as it worth the financial effort and labor effort to gather it? Um, it's likely that, I was just logging into the G I S, there's probably a way to query it and just have it run as a report. But I don't know that our staff currently have that sophistication as far as the program goes. Um, but it's probably just about learning how to use the G I S program.
Yeah.
Better.
Uh, for instance, it's, you know, they've already coded. You can, you can query for single families and two-family and three-family. Or is anything above. Four families. So, well, shucks, you have to do a manual, a little manual effort. Fortunately, we're only thirty-eight buildings or something like that, we had thirty-two, we had to do that with, in order to figure out how many, you know. We, we can actually tell you the thirty-two buildings, this one has six units, this one has eight, this one has twenty-six, and so forth. We need to know that too. It's just all a matter of changing a, a few little codes in the, the tax assessing software.
Changes code in some program, things crash. And what you really, what you only really care about from our point of view is, is next year gonna be more than or less than twenty-five fifty-four? Cause then you know if you're getting more housing units or not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eighty U's, eighty U's.
Yeah, but, but you also wanna track, um, what types of housing are being built, whether they're single or apartments. And I think also, you know, tracking the number of occupants per housing unit is also very informative, cause that tells us or tells developers what kind of housing is in demand.
Well, that, that might be touching on a little bit of a privacy issue there, but, but, but I, and then what, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, but, but that, that information, you, you're not asking people how many are in their household.
No.
You're just saying, here's our population, here's the number of households.
Right.
Right. Yeah.
But it's also, there's a catch-20 there of, if you only build single-family homes, you're never gonna have an average household size of, sorry, if you're single-bedroom apartments, you'll never have an average household size of five.
Right, right.
Right, so I don't think it actually drives
Right.
what the demand is, it's more a reflection of what has been built.
Yeah, anyway, um, with what we have now, and it was a little bit more extensive than what I've shown you here. Um, I think, I think the consultants will be able to, you know, do some mapping for us. I'm not sure exactly what we want, but, um, that, that might be helpful. Um, so that's, um, Village, um, haven't done anything further at the Shaker Historical District side of things, uh, Shaker Village District. I did have a big broad brush topic to toss out. And it's dealing with the Eastman and actually Shaker Village, but also maybe, um, Lakeview, and, and that is that, you know, we talked about Eastman being a homeowners association, and they're, they're well-regulated, and there's very little that we're concerned about that they're gonna do, that, you know. All the good reasons, we thought maybe they should be a separate district. And that applies equally to Shaker Village Homeowners Association, there are actually two there. And then I thought, well, there's also Lakeview, they got a tight homeowners association. I don't, I'm not sure that's really any different than, anyway. The general concept that popped in my head was maybe instead of just calling it Eastman, that we, we call it a something else, but includes Eastman, um, Lakeview and, and Shaker Village. Um, criteria predates zoning ordinance when these places were built. Have a long history of successful homeowners associations. Still in place, you know, they're practically built out. I don't know, there's not much gonna be happening in either one of these places.
Um, Lakeview maybe now, cause they have sewer.
But if, if.
Potential, yeah.
Other, other than the setbacks, it was not a whole lot that, uh, I mean, we do site plan and all that for us. But if they wanted to add another row of condos in their community, then.
They actually have, uh, foundations up there, but they, they've torn them out since that Lakeview.
Yeah.
There was definitely a plan for more there, but it's interesting, I don't know if the, that the homeowners association would ever go for more up there. Once, once people are sort of sit- situated.
Yeah.
They don't want more.
Yeah. So, just chew on that a moment, that's, and we don't, again, have to make any decision, it's just, just an idea tossing.
You think they tore them out because of all the septic problems and didn't wanna add?
No, it was twenty years ago, but I, I think that they didn't have, it was like Eastman.
They had.
They didn't have saleable. Eastman went bankrupt twice. Two banks went down because of Eastman.
There now, because of the septic fields are gone too, so.
Right.
But on the other hand, there's probably more demand for housing.
Oh, there is. And that would be.
Twenty twenty-four that there was.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty-five years ago.
Oh, I agree.
So.
And there is that, and there is sewer.
And there's sewer, and they have buildable land.
Right.
Think about how they're currently in the R one district.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, how would we? Uh, how would we, how would we deal with? An expansion of Lakeview, it would be totally non-conforming.
It would be, it would be a zoning variance.
Yeah.
That's the only way you could do it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Or you go back to the original approval, which has substantially been built out.
They have predates.
Well, they're still building in, uh, uh, Shaker Village on the original approval. Happens every day, I mean, there's.
Yeah, there was no expiration date on the plans.
Right.
Um, so it's, oh yeah, it's pretty possible.
The state law is if there's not been substantial progress in the two years, then you have to go back to the drawing board, but. You can certainly argue the substantial progress has been made there, right, I mean. It's, it's built, I mean, mostly, you know. That's come up in eleven a few times, when somebody gets a project approved and it kinda sits on the back burner. And then it, and then it, okay, we're gonna go, and eleven will say, nope, you're, you're expired, and then they fight over whether or not. Substantial progress is, you know, working behind the scenes or actually digging on site, and that's a big fight they've had a few times. They actually lost one of them, I don't know what's happening with a few of the others, but it was the Brady Sullivan.
Right.
Got something to chew on, as you say.
Yeah.
Thanks.
We can talk about it.
Thanks, Tim.
Um, anything else? Anybody else have anything to report? Okay, next, we go on to old business. Um, zoning rewrite RFQs, um.
I should all have.
Yeah, three dollars.
Yep.
Yeah.
I have a discrepancy, I have this one.
We did have three responses, turns out, uh, David, when you were here, I thought it was new, but it's four. So we had two more come in on Friday, um, number one was, uh. First one we got was the, uh, Ivy Van and Carol Ogilvy, which is this blue one, you guys have that? Second one that came in was the, uh, Barrett and S E group.
Mm-hmm.
I actually know a few of those planners personally. Uh, and then the RPC, who I know, right, most of their staff really well.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, no, uh, I know Ivy and Carol too, from this, Carol did some work with us. Maybe five years ago, we had, uh, Mike Killian doing, uh, we did a couple of focus groups. And he was talking with us about the strategic governance, he had Carol as a, uh. For the, my father's sub, maybe on that project, she was here for our focus group, I know, and she was taking lots of notes and. She's, they're both excellent, I mean, they're both.
Did more, did more come in, or is we down to just three?
Just the three.
Three. Why did resilience not?
He let us know at the very beginning of the process, he was not semitic, um, I did reach out, I talked to his deputy. I can't, I, I, I've actually reached out to him to try to talk to him today, I left a message, but I talked to his deputy Liz, who we, we were dealing with on the master plan. She didn't wanna sort of assume anything, um, it was Tim's suggestion that we certainly can. Try to get it revived, ba- basically say, hey, we'd still love to have you in on this, uh. Decision-making, you know, that we're gonna be choosing.
Well, what runs through my mind, I mean, there, there is, there's, I'm sure there's, there's reasons and, and exceptions, et cetera. But we now have two planning groups that have decided that they didn't wanna work with.
Well, I mean, one is.
But, but it was pretty clear that she didn't wanna work with us again, so I'm just thinking maybe some self-reflection? May, maybe we're doing something wrong?
I'm sorry, who didn't wanna work with us again?
Brandy.
I forgot, I, I don't know that that's the case.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't say she didn't want, she, she left the country.
Yeah.
It's like she moved, out of, out of the country.
I, I don't know, it was a rather interesting conversation that you had with her at the end, in terms of, based on the letter that you and I wrote, she, she was. Banded athlete at the end, yes? No, am, am I reading too much into it?
I think she had plans that she might be able to work with us.
She thought she could do it from Australia.
And then I think reality's.
I'll say it is, just a little self-reflection, maybe?
Well, well.
I mean, I'd like, I'd like to know why resilience didn't wanna. Did we give them a? They could look at our minutes, they could. Discussions we've had about them when they weren't.
Yeah, we didn't give them a very good grade.
I would say not, but we also, we also talked about how. Were they to submit here, we know them and we would, we would say. Just don't do things like this again, otherwise you're a good. But I think it would be smart, maybe I'm being stupid, but I think it would be smart to understand why they're not.
Well, I could, I could guess a reason. We kept asking for more and more and more in a crisis year. When they went out of their way to take us on by hiring another person. I mean, working with another person, splitting the.
Right, right.
And, and then we had a little more we wanted, oh, and we wanted a little more. And maybe other clients are less stressful, I mean, it's not only.
My point, exactly, my point exactly, thank you.
I don't think.
I, I think it, I think it is a good plan to understand, if we can. Why they don't want to submit.
Well, I mean, how many?
Go ahead and I'll give you mine too.
How many applica-, how many, uh, potential applicants are out there?
Me, contractors.
Yeah.
I'd say somewhere in the vicinity of twenty-five, and then, of course, we did not send.
Well, how many do we, how many do we notify, say, where?
Probably about twenty.
Okay.
That are on the pre-approved list.
Okay, so there's seventeen that didn't respond.
And that's not untypical.
No, yeah, which, I mean, it just likes, I mean, saying the same thing.
That's got to do with my point.
Well, it's explaining a number of reasons why any, anybody did not respond, resilience can be just like reports.
What, what I think happened, and this is perhaps speculation on my part, but. What I think happened is that. We were working on building a good working relationship.
Right.
Between us and them.
Yep.
And they did. A fair amount of work in helping budget out the.
The next day.
The, the grant application.
Yep, yep, they did.
They wrote a letter of commitment. And then we turned around and we said, we're gonna send this out to bid. And if I were in Steve Whitman's shoes, I would be a little bit miffed.
So would I.
So, that's kind of the way I see it, that's how I think it went down. Um, you know, perhaps at some point we'll be able to have a conversation with Steve Whitman. Um, you know, cause we're certainly very happy with what they're doing on master plan phase two. I mean, stuff comes in, um. When we get to the, uh, agenda item about, uh, updating that, I'll fill you in on our meeting, um, of. Monday, I think it was, and where we are and where we're going, um. And, you know, it, it's like if you have. Somebody that you're working with, and I know there were some issues.
Sure.
And I think they recognize there, that there were some issues. And, you know, they, they tried to help us out of a jam. And when you try to help somebody out of a jam, sometimes it doesn't go as smoothly. As you would hope it would go, um, they were, you know, picking up the pieces. That they had no input on, they had no input on budgeting. And they tried. I think in very good faith, to try to dovetail the master plan and the zoning rewrite. Into. One set of public involvement. And, you know, it was well-intentioned, we all thought it was a good idea, cause nobody pushed back on it. And it didn't work out as we had hoped.
Right.
And it was a, a real short time, timeframe, and there really wasn't a whole lot of time to recover, so. That's kinda where we are, I mean, personally, I don't think it was a wise idea to go out to. Send out RFQs, and that's the way I voted when the board voted, but it's a board and we go by the majority decision.
Yep, I still think it would be if, if we can, if, uh, Rob has any luck talking to Steve. To get his two cents, if he's willing to share. I think we should stop speculating about this though, in public, and just have the conversation and report back to us what, what you hear.
All right, now, Rob, maybe you and I can set up a meeting with Steve, maybe we go up to his office and. Um. You know, after Thanksgiving and.
Have a chat.
Have a chit-chat. But in the meantime, since we have. Other proposals, um, I think we should all look at them. And at our next meeting, we should, um. Decide if we want to invite any of them in, based on what we see on paper. Tim?
We, um, just go ahead and do that. I don't think a thirty-minute interview is gonna be, um. I don't see why we would.
Yes, we've only got three.
You know, they, they've gone to the trouble to put these together and that, I mean, it's. Only appropriate that we have an, an opportunity to, uh. Make the pitch. Yeah, my only qualifier to that is, we would like to have the people that are actually assigned. To the project be the people doing the presenting, so that we can get to know them.
Yep, yeah, and. Yep, my, my question would be, would that further alienate resilience?
If they're not, if they're not going to bid, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
They've made a decision not to bid?
Right, yeah, it's like, we didn't receive anything from them, so.
We can't get some, I don't believe we could contract with them.
Yes.
Would you like to invite these three to your next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, and if they can't, you know, if one of them can't make it. Would we let them come to the second one in December?
Well, it, well, what about a virtual?
We could do that, yes.
Where, where are these people located?
We got Hingham.
Peterborough.
Yeah.
Isn't that South Shore?
Actually, I, I won't, I won't say what I was gonna say, um.
Hingham South Shore.
Yeah, it is for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my second, nevermind.
Okay. Um, so, okay, let's, let's devote ninety minutes at our next meeting.
You should probably have. Couple of questions, but this is what we want you to cover.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that all three of them are on the same starting page.
Yep.
Right, I mean, I think it's pretty simple, right, we want, the, the goal is to get them to talk, right? The more talking we do, and the more talking they do, the better, so a couple of open-ended questions, and we wanna get to know them.
Mm-hmm.
Right, that's the goal.
We wanna figure out their.
They were virtual.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, they'll all be congregated here.
Yeah, yeah, but they're used to that, I mean.
I'm sure they all know.
That's normal, um, I think you do the virtual to, to make it convenient for them, if they, you know. Because it's short-term, a couple of weeks away, maybe, from my view, it's better to have them in person. Uh, I, I hate to assume.
When is the grant that, uh, when will we, we hear if we got approved for the grant?
Sometime in December.
Sometime this.
We don't know, we don't know the actual date.
I'm assuming by, by the end of December.
So we have two meetings, we're still having two meetings?
Yeah.
So, we can just plan on, between these two days.
Yeah.
Which one can you make?
Right.
Yeah, preferably in person.
Yep, uh, that's the way I would.
Okay, and that'll give them a month if they offer the, the second one.
I don't think you want it more than thirty minutes, I mean, because, I mean, let's face it, we could probably talk to them for three or four hours, right? Well. You have to, you have to set a limit, but if you wanna have filled in a little time for Q and A.
Forty-five minute?
Maybe forty-five?
I mean, with the two meetings, I think if we have two at one and the other one. At the third meeting, though, because we have an applicant, so, and the rest of the agenda, we have to keep the agenda clean soon.
We did, we did it, uh, when we hired, well, when we hired Brandy for the master plan, the first time, we interviewed three firms, and it was. Just like that, it was kinda speed dating.
Yeah.
Two of the firms were out there and one of them was in here, and we just kinda.
They get used to it.
Oh, yeah, yes, yep, yep.
Um. But, uh, I'd like to hear from our select board representative, what do you think about all this?
Yeah, it's a great one. One thing I'd say is like, if you're talking to resilience, we should try to find out why they chose not to, but. If they change their mind, I don't think it's too late in my mind for them to submit one and.
Right.
Come and do it.
I just don't, my, my reasoning is, why I don't like the idea is, cause they didn't put it in.
Yeah, right.
So obviously, there's a reason why they didn't put it in.
Right.
Well, there is a message there.
There is a message, I agree, there's a message there.
And, and we heard it.
Yeah.
What if their reason was that they already did a bunch of upfront work, helping us prepare the grant proposal? Budgeting, et cetera, et cetera, so they didn't wanna, you know, spend more time on something that was.
They may not get.
That they may not get.
Yeah.
And again, I, I am, I am hypothesizing.
Yeah, and seventeen others said that, so.
To Tim's point, I think, I think, uh, uh, Rob and David talked to Steve or tried to talk to Steve and see what happens. And any other discussion, we should just.
Right.
Stop.
Okay.
But, well, we'll, we'll give them a little bit of wiggle room here, if. They come to, if, if their discussion leads to resilience saying, well, you know what, we'll, we'll get something out of it. We wanna allow them to do it. I would say we would. The, the R P does, did waive a lot of formalities.
Yeah.
This is not a bid situation.
Right.
We wanna make sure we get the best qualified firm working for us.
Right, and at this point, it was only a request for qualifications, not vocations.
That's, yeah, that's my, that's my thing, I mean, if somebody has worked for you, like, we had an employee here at Public Works, worked for us for. Five years and that position was no longer needed or whatever, and they reapplied for another job, do we need to interview them? I mean, you, we know about them already, we already know.
Yeah.
What kinda capabilities they have and what kind of, you know, staff and, so I don't know, I mean.
I always interview.
Yeah, I think, I think yes, yes, you do.
Okay, yeah, you know, you, you would have to conduct the interview to be fair to all the applicants.
Right.
But, uh, if you have a known quantity and you're very happy with what the known quantity. Has done for you in the past, and the dollar amounts are roughly equal. Then you might just go with the known quantity rather than try somebody new. If you weren't happy with the known quantity, then by all means.
What? We had that argument some time ago.
We did.
We've got three firms, so it may be four.
I'm not gonna die on that hill, that's my saying.
I want anybody dying.
There's one tonight I might though.
Next.
Next.
Okay, uh, so that.
To ask, did you wanna outline questions, or do you wanna come up with three or four questions, or is that something?
I don't think we'd need to do that, I think we'd do that to David and Rob, but, yeah. You know, they have open-ended questions. Or if you've got a question, you're pressing to add.
Yeah, if you've got, if you guys have questions that you'd like to suggest. Um, you know, get them in by the day before Thanksgiving. Um, you know, get them in by the day before Thanksgiving. Is that reasonable? That's a week.
Yeah.
And then Rob and I can sit and. Distill those questions and come up with some of our own and decide on two or three that we are going to. Send out along with the invitation to come and talk to us. That makes sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the plan of action. Zoning amendments for twenty twenty five. Uh, we're supposed to do a final review of the proposed languages tonight.
I had hoped to be able to pull this up in Word, but I was not successful. So I've got them as, I've got them as PDFs here. So let's start with, this is ADU, this is language from David. David, you word submit these? I got these from your email.
Yeah, I did, I did a little bit of change to, um. I scroll down. I think it was at number three about, uh, shall install. A new onsite sewage disposal.
Well, we still got the licensed professional problem, I know.
Where is that?
Cause it's, it's not the licensed professional, it's occupying it.
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't change that. Um, is this the most version?
I pulled this from your email that you sent me.
Okay.
We're just gonna delete prior to occupancy by a licensed professional?
Yeah.
That's it.
Well, you can leave it prior to occupancy, okay?
And get rid of.
Yeah.
Licensed professional.
Just get rid of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Get rid of by a licensed professional.
Rob, you can draw right on that.
Yeah. There's a redact.
You can redact something in, well, there's a little button right at the top left corner.
Yep.
There you go.
Yep, there you go.
Now the question is, can I see?
Of course you can say.
Of course you can.
Upper right.
Can you sign it?
Control S, maybe?
Looks like it.
Yep, it took it. Okay, great. Anything else from this, uh?
That's all we were gonna change was just that.
That was it. Ooh, let's see if I can have.
I can't see that board someone's saying.
See, let's see, yeah, we'll do a share.
Who do we have as a guest?
See, let's see.
Okay.
Anything else for this, uh? We did update that last time. We updated the definition.
Right.
For, uh, conditioned space.
Space, yeah. That's what I mean.
Yep. Next one is.
It's a big deal. Getting this approved.
This was from Tim. I thought you guys were pretty happy to discuss. Did anybody change? David, you change anything on this?
I didn't do that.
Probably have two.
You guys are generally happy with the parking one?
Yeah.
About Route Five District article. This is from Dan.
That's an easy one.
Yep.
Yeah, I had to admit, put on that. I drank coffee while he talked to me.
That's right. Yeah.
This is how it's gonna be, bride.
Yeah, I, I think the attorney would probably, he'll insert some.
Right.
Some words to make that.
He can.
To make that work, but I think the, the draft of what we got here is, is right.
All right. So there's only one more here. Let's see. Route Four.
That's, it'd be pretty easy too.
And what I did on that one, no, that's not mine.
Sure.
I'm positive because, because what, what I did was, was flip it. And in order to do the, um, quarter acre water and sewer. Without having to do two articles, I put everything into the CB. And what I said was the two changes are. A, expand the CB into. And include what is Route Four, friends eliminating the Route Four District. And change the minimum lot size for water and sewer to a quarter acre. And that covered both of those things in one zoning amendment. Rather than have to deal with two, which would put us in a position of. What if one passes and the other doesn't?
Yeah, it, it has, it has to be done that way. I, I agree. It's just.
But there's, that's, that's not what I wrote.
Really? Okay.
I'll send it to you again, um.
And we'll do it on the fourth.
No.
Okay.
Just three, one, one left, so that's good. Progress, yeah.
All right, um. Are we done with zoning amendments? Okay, let me update on master plan. Um, we looked at. The second go-round of the last five chapters on Monday evening. Um, Liz did not join the meeting, but. We taped it so that she could review what was said. Uh, generally, all of, most if not all of the, um, edits that we had. Proposed at the previous meeting had been incorporated. Um, we made a few more. The draft chapters, which are all stamped draft, are up on the Enfield Leaps website. And we had a little glitch with some incorrect links, but those were fixed the next day. And, um. If we haven't done it already, we are going to be sending the drafts. Out to Dolores Struckhoff and Madeline Johnson. Uh, who are our two volunteer proofreaders. And they will go over it with a fine-tooth comb, make their suggestions in terms of grammar, spelling, typos. Um, what have you. And then we will be meeting with, uh, Liz again on, what's the date?
Monday.
This coming Monday?
And just so you know, um, as directed by the task force and, um. At the meeting the other night, I have sent it, I sent links to the Enfield Leap site. Yet with the current drafts.
Yep.
Again, key word is drafts. Uh, sent it to conservation, energy, recreation. And the select board.
Mm-hmm.
And the town manager and the assistant town manager.
Mm-hmm.
So that everybody now has like, we, we've now sort of released that to them. I mean, we were. Kind of doing edits as the task force. Not wanting to let it go out yet, quite yet, because we didn't want people saying, hey, you missed a spelling here. Yeah, we did. We get, we caught that. We were changing it. So there, you know, there's been some edits already done by the task force. And now the task force is starting to get to the point where we can kind of let it go even further out. Um, there's also a meeting scheduled for the ninth of December with the task force of, again. So we'll, I did put it on listserv as well. We're gonna publicize it on our social media. Uh, newsletter, uh, content is due next week. Um, so we'll be able to, uh, get as much feedback as possible. Obviously, now it's the point where we want everybody to kind of weigh and see what thoughts are.
This is the, did we hear you correctly?
Yes.
Phase.
Yep.
And hopefully, uh, because this, what, these last five chapters were driven by pre-existing committees. And they're the ones that provided, I would say, ninety, ninety-five percent of the input. Um, I'm pretty confident that the committee people are gonna say. Okay, you got it. And, you know, what the public says, um. Will almost be a reflection on whether the committees themselves have their priorities. In, in line with what the public wants. So I think we'll be getting some good feedback.
Okay.
Either way.
And I've only got one comment.
Yes.
The chapter should not be conservation. It should be natural resources. Because I'm on, because that's what the chapter always was in the, uh. Master plan. It's not a conservation chapter. It's a natural resources.
Conservation is you're conserving X.
Right.
Where natural resources is land, water.
Right, exactly. It's the natural resources chapter, not the conservation chapter.
I, I would suggest that we go back to the. RSA that talks about master plans.
Yeah.
Because that gives a list and whatever they say we should be going with.
I agree. I like that, Dan. I mean, we could certainly do it as conservation and natural resources.
You can, but it's, it's actually your, your master plan is for the natural resources, not the conservation.
Yeah, with the heritage chapter, we added preservation.
I don't, and that's why I liked the other plan. That's why I had no problem with the other titles. It's, it's not a conservation, it's a natural resources plan.
David Sealy's got her hand up.
Sealy has her hand up. Sealy, what's on your mind?
Just gonna need to unmute that.
Sealy? We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
No? Yes, yes.
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 Well, I had said, um. I really forgot what it was I was gonna tell you, cause there was two things and then I threw it away. I don't, I don't remember what I was gonna tell you about something you were talking about. All right.
You think of it. No problem.
I'll type it to you.
Okay. So that's where we are on phase two of the master plan, um. We all agreed at the meeting that, you know, we're not in any. Under any time crunch to get it done. Because it's the planning board that approves it. It does not have to go to the voters. So we should set our priorities as a planning board. To get all of the zoning amendment stuff done and to get this zoning rewrite stuff. Off on a correct start. And once we have done all that, then we can devote our attention to. The, uh, master plan chapters. The only caveat on that is that we have to spend all of the budgeted money. By the end of this year. So, we've got, we've got to have a pretty good idea and I think the task force does have a. Good idea of the edits that, um, Liz and other people at resilience are gonna have to do. And I'm pretty confident that they'll be able to get those done. Um, so they can bill it out by the end of the year. And, uh, unless we get, you know, some major changes that the public is interested in having made. Um, we should be done with that process sometime next month. And when it, you know, when it can get to the board, it will.
Question about that.
Yes.
When it gets to the board. Not having participated in the, in the, in the writing of the master plan at all. Um, I, I think it's, it, it's kind of a scenario where. The committees that have written the master plan are bringing it to the planning board. For the planning board's approval. And. Wouldn't it make sense for them to, uh, just to set aside a, an entire meeting where, or however long I think it will take? Uh, for their groups to make a brief presentation on their portion of the plan. I mean, it would be. Um.
We're gonna have a public hearing on.
There has to be a public hearing, yes.
Okay. Well, that would take.
So that, that would be, that would be the appropriate place to have that kind of, uh, presentation.
Then after the hearing, we meet and.
And then after the hearing, you know, we take in whatever comments there are and. We decide, uh, that we either accept it as written or that we need to go back to the drawing board and make. Major or minor changes.
Okay. Which, by the way, don't forget, enfield-leaps.org. So you guys can read those chapters too. I mean, I didn't send an email to the planning board. But because you guys are involved in this, at least to a larger extent than these other committees.
Somehow I got an email from you with the links.
Yeah, I did too today. Yeah, we got it today.
Put it a little certain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Dan, what did you think of it? You said you read them.
I read them. I thought they were good. I've got, I mean, I've got questions on a couple of them, but.
Okay.
You're right about natural resources, dude.
Natural resources, dude. The other one, I mean.
I got the law pulled up here.
I don't think you put it in master, I don't think you put it in a master plan, truthfully. Where it says conservation threat is a lack of community land ethics as a weakness.
I'm sorry, but I don't think we have a lack of community land ethics. Sealy's coming back.
Okay, Sealy? Sealy, did you decide to speak rather than type?
Okay, I, I remember, but it's no big deal. I wrote it to, to Rob. It was just that he sent. He sent a notice to Heritage Commission too about the meeting on Monday. He just said three of them and I wanted to have him do the other one.
I did, I said.
Sorry.
I'm sorry I didn't get the full, I did, I communicated with Meredith. Meredith's back on Heritage and she's now the chair again. So I've communicated with Meredith this morning. So she will be with the committee. And they actually. Scheduled early December. So they may take the extra two weeks to communicate with us. Uh, at the task force, because we do have the second meeting, um. The next meeting is this week and then the next, after that is December ninth, just on Monday.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sealy.
Thanks for the comments, Sealy. Uh, so anybody have any new business they'd like to put on the table? Our next meeting will be December fourth and where and what time, Rob?
Public comment?
Public.
Yeah, David, can you throw in a couple of comments?
Sure. Um. I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. I had a couple of goals coming in tonight. Almost learned about the two thousand twenty-six rewrite. I think I learned a lot, so thank you. The timeline and the process seems very interesting. Um.
Dan, I, I would suggest that you look at the grant application, which I think Rob would be happy to send to you.
Okay.
Or, or I.
Like I learned a lot tonight, but yeah, be happy to look at that.
You know, you, i- if you look at the grant application itself. Uh, you'll learn a lot more detail about the timeline, the tasks, who's responsible for it.
All right, thank you. Um, second thing was, I am a member of the Master Planning Task Force two point oh. Fortunately, I couldn't make it this last Monday because I elected to go to the select board meeting. Um, I will just say, um, I don't know any of the other people that put in a RFQ. Uh, or the zoning rewrite, but my experience with resilience has been fantastic. I really enjoyed working with them. I've been very, very impressed with them, um, as a result of working with them with that, uh, task force. And then number three is, are the zoning amendment drafts available to the public at this point?
Not yet. They had, they have to go through a legal review with the town attorney.
Yeah.
And he's probably gonna make some changes, add or subtract some language. And if I'm not mistaken, um. In the final form, it will be the existing ordinance with. Strike-throughs or what's being taken out.
Yeah.
And bold or italics or bold italic.
We have to publicize it too. We'll, we'll be placing an ad.
For the news.
With final language and then obviously there's a hearing. We can also publish a.
Two hearings if we need it.
Possible two.
Yeah, it, you know, we only need one.
Right.
If we need a second one, we can certainly have the second one, right? But the narrative also goes in the town report. It's there in the, in the voting book when you go in as well. So that you'll have some sort of layperson's description of what you're being asked to vote on.
And why.
Yep, in the voting book. Will they come up at the town meeting?
It'll be, no, no, those are voted.
Town meeting is Tuesday, uh, voting. Well, town meetings Tuesday, uh, voting.
Any other questions, Dan, or comments?
No, that seems a little strange to me that I'm sitting here at a meeting that's public and you put them on the screen. And I'm happy to share it if you want. Well, that was my question, can I look at?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's my question.
Yeah, I mean, you know, uh, understanding that there are likely to be some changes.
Got it, it's draft.
Yeah.
That's the picture.
Understand, that's a draft, cuz this, this is more discussion. Mary, is it okay if I go to, uh, Robin?
Right, right, cuz it's just gonna set a public here, so.
Good, thank you.
The draft's a public.
It's, it, it, it's been public, um, as the board massaged the language.
Yeah.
As the board discussed what we wanted or didn't want to have in, in, in this year's set of amendments, so let's, um, you know, talk to Rob, and, and I'm sure he will be happy to send you whatever current version we have.
That's great, thank you.
And if you wait until Friday or Monday, you'll have whatever I wrote for, uh, ADUs and the, uh, CB Route Four. Um, I, I will try to get that to Rob on Friday. But let's be, let's be safe and give me the weekend.
Seeley's still got the pot.
That's there.
Alright, Seeley?
That's early.
We didn't, I didn't.
Those were earlier.
She says.
I, I'm just reading your comments.
Oh.
My back is to the screen.
Before.
Those are before.
I didn't know that.
That's okay. You got something else, Seeley? Cuz your hand's still up.
No, just what I, oh, I don't know why it didn't go off.
Okay.
Don't worry about it. Sorry, but anyway, um, I just wanted, I wanna comment on something which I wasn't planning to do, but just listening to it. If you put that R-five dwelling accessory units, which is really in fact for families, that's a lot of families, and it's a lot of people for that area, cuz it's so rural and forested. And I just think that's way too much, but anyway, the real thing, um, what else I wanna ask, did you say that's in effect when we, when we posted? So if somebody wanted to do it, they could do it right away?
When it's voted on.
It's a town meeting.
No, something, it's, it, it's in effect till it's voted on, right?
No.
I don't know about that, well, anyway, that's the way I thought it was at one time.
Until it's voted on, and if it doesn't pass, then it never goes into effect.
Yep, okay, alright, well, that's good to know, I just got a little worried that everything will fix. Well, I hope we start doing it now. For five hundred thousand a house.
With, with every, with every zoning amendment, that's something that the town has to vote on, and it has to be passed by a majority.
Yes.
On official written ballot, exactly.
Yep, well, good, I'm glad. Alright, well, thank you, but, you know.
We'll have our public hearing process on it, and people will have an opportunity to comment. And we may change based on public comment, and then it goes to a vote, that's the process. So, um, next meeting, December fourth. Motion has been made and seconded that we adjourn this meeting. Um.
Who are you going to vote?
Of course, we're gonna vote on that, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstention? We are adjourned at eight fifteen, thank you, people.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
You shot it awesome, Ken.
This has been.